Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of March 28th, a special early start at 5:30. Ms. Hunt, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Could you please join me in the pledge? So at this time, council is going to move into executive session for discussion of potential litigation per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110. No action will be taken and we will reconvene by 6:15, at 6:15 PM. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Mr. Carter.
I move to excuse Ms. Moulton and Mr. Young from tonight's meeting.
Okay, motion by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Walters to excuse Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All right, we'll be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes.
Okay, welcome back. We're reconvening our regular session of the city council meeting. Out of executive session and per RCW 4230 110, no action was taken during the executive session. All right, moving on to announcements and committee reports. Just a couple of things for me. We're going to need to pull item 7C off of tonight's agenda. That's the 32nd and M intersection. And we needed to get a couple more pieces of information from Wash Dot, which is doing the 100% or nearly 100% of the financing for that project. So we wanted to make sure that will be all squared away and we will see that on the agenda next week. A quick COVID update, just because again it continues to be good news. Skagit County's seven day case rate has decreased 32% since last week. Skagit County has also transitioned from substantial transmission level to a moderate level. And in case you don't know, that's a good thing. And Island Hospital has zero COVID positive patients. Okay, council announcements. The finance committee is up first.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Finance committee meeting last week included Mr. McDougall and myself. We hosted Dan O'Donnell, former La Conner Town Council member and former mayor of La Conner, who presented here at council a couple of weeks ago during public comment on the reconciliation of our regional water system finances. He's concerned about a $5,800 difference in his version of the accounting versus our version of the accounting for the town of La Conner. Notably, the town of La Conner is not concerned about that difference in accounting. But also they have about 1,500 accounts, $5,800 divided by 1,500 is about $3.80. So it doesn't really amount to much per account. However, we did host him at our meeting at his request and we went through his analysis and we were able to correct a couple of his misunderstandings about the way the accounting is done, which accounts for, I think, almost the entirety of the difference in dispute. So we were able to resolve, I think it's safe to say. I think that we were able to resolve that issue. And that is the entirety of our finance committee meeting for last week.
All right, thank you. Fiber committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Last Thursday, myself and Ms. Hubick were able to attend the fiber committee meeting. And in the meeting, we got a report here. The numbers were actually just shy of 1,200 connected customers. That's residential and business combined. And as for signups, we've actually passed the 35% threshold. So citywide, we've signed up 36.3% of addresses passed. So major milestone there to pass that 35%. Computer's moving slow. As for construction schedules, basically the same report as last time. We're still waiting on that EDA grant. So that forces the east side of town, finishing up the east side of town to be next year, basically. We're going to proceed with Gremas' view the latter half of this year. And of course, our installers are busily installing roughly 17 to 20 new installs a week right now out in Skyline. And really, actually not much new to report beyond that. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Housing affordability, community services committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Our committee met last Thursday. We talked a little bit more about our Habitat for Humanity project. The Skagit Habitat project would use city-owned leased land that originally was conveyed to the city for use as a park. I think Mr. Mismer would really like to move along with this project. But we do have a couple of outstanding questions still. More questions come up each time we talk more about it, including how we are going to replace that property with a park. And so we are going to be sending an email to Skagit Habitat with some suggestions for additional things, additional questions we'd like them to answer. But we also need to get some resolution to the park issue with the Parks Department. How much is it going to cost to build the park? What's the plan for construction of that park? We talked a little bit about the Samish Commons project, which is up in Bellingham. It's a new housing development that has been pursued by the Bellingham Housing Authority. It looks like a great project. We've requested staff get some time with their executive director to come talk to us.
Okay, welcome back. We're reconvening our regular session of the city council meeting. Out of executive session and per RCW 4230 110, no action was taken during the executive session. All right, moving on to announcements and committee reports. Just a couple of things for me. We're going to need to pull item 7C off of tonight's agenda. That's the 32nd and M intersection. And we needed to get a couple more pieces of information from Wash Dot, which is doing the 100% or nearly 100% of the financing for that project. So we wanted to make sure that will be all squared away, and we will see that on the agenda next week. A quick COVID update, just because again it continues to be good news. Skagit County's seven-day case rate has decreased 32% since last week. Skagit County has also transitioned from substantial transmission level to a moderate level. And in case you don't know, that's a good thing. And Island Hospital has zero COVID-positive patients. Okay, council announcements. The finance committee is up first.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Finance committee meeting last week concluded. Mr. McDougal and myself, we hosted Dan O'Donnell, former La Conner Town Council member and former mayor of La Conner, who presented here at council a couple of weeks ago during public comment on the reconciliation of our regional water system finances. He's concerned about a $5,800 difference in his version of the accounting versus our version of the accounting for the town of La Conner. Notably, the town of La Conner is not concerned about that difference in accounting, but also they have about 1,500 accounts. $5,800 divided by 1,500 is about $3.80. So it doesn't really amount to much per account. However, we did host him at our meeting at his request, and we went through his analysis, and we were able to correct a couple of his misunderstandings about the way the accounting is done, which accounts for, I think, almost the entirety of the difference in dispute. So we were able to resolve, I think, it's safe to say. I think that we were able to resolve that issue. And that is the entirety of our finance committee meeting for last week.
All right, thank you. Fiber committee?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Last Thursday, myself and Ms. Hubick were able to attend the fiber committee meeting. And in the meeting, we got a report here. The numbers were actually just shy of 1,200 connected customers. That's residential and business combined. And as for signups, we've actually passed the 35% threshold. So citywide, we've signed up 36.3% of addresses passed. So major milestone there to pass that 35%. Computers moving slow. As for construction schedule, it's basically the same, same report as last time. We're still, we're waiting on that EDA grant. So that forces the east side of town, finishing up the east side of town to be next year, basically. We're going to proceed with Gremas' view the latter half of this year. And of course, our installers are busily installing roughly 17 to 20 new installs a week right now out in, out in Skyline. And really, actually, not much new to report beyond that. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Housing affordability, community services committee?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Our committee met last Thursday. We talked a little bit more about our Habitat for Humanity project. The Skagit Habitat project would use city-owned leased land that originally was conveyed to the city for use as a park. I think Mr. Mismer would really like to move along with this project, but we do have a couple of outstanding questions still. More questions come up each time we talk more about it, including how we are going to replace that property with a park. And so we are, we're going to be sending an email to Skagit Habitat with some suggestions for additional things that, additional questions we'd like them to answer, but we also need to get some resolution to the park issue with the Parks Department. How much is it going to cost to build the park? What's the plan for construction of that park? We talked a little bit about the Samish Commons Project, which is up in Bellingham. It's a new housing development that is being, that has been pursued by the Bellingham Housing Authority. It looks like a great project. We've requested staff get some time with their executive director to come talk to us about that project. And our local housing authority director knew something about that, the Belling, the Bellingham-Samish Commons Project and had been in touch with that person. And we're going to get more in the loop on that as potentially a model for what could be done here in Anacortes. We have scheduled Skagit County Health Director Jennifer Johnson for April 21st to present to us on the county's proposed North Star vision with respect to behavioral health and homelessness throughout the county. Don't have anything else to say about that at this point, but she's scheduled to talk to us. And then we spoke a little bit at length with Police Chief Floyd about the way they're interacting with homeless people, the tent that has appeared at the library, and an article that we read in the Cascadia Daily News on Bellingham's different approach to dealing with that issue. Apparently, the police department has been enforcing hours of operations for parks, but those hours of operations are not in our code. We deliberately didn't include those hours of operations in the code before because we were advised not to. And if we are able to enforce those hours of operations, we want to enforce them elsewhere. So we're going to have a greater conversation about that and reduce the hours of operations to writing in an ordinance to go in our code and maybe apply to more than just parks. And we ended a little bit early.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, move it unless I missed any other committee reports. Okay, moving on to public comment. Time on our agenda, if any members of the public want to speak on any issue, any item that is not on our agenda tonight. Anybody here to speak on something that's not on the agenda? So, all right, online looking, okay. All right, we'll move on to item 6, consent agenda. And council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'd like to pull item 6H.
Mr. Carter.
I move we approve the consent agenda, Alpha through India minus Hotel.
Okay, motion to approve can, oh, wait, any seconds there?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Carter, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve consent agenda items A through G and I. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Mr. Walters, consent agenda item H.
Item H is purchase of a new generator for the public safety building, the police station. And Mr. Ludeman is here, and I'd asked him to be prepared to answer some questions about this. Primarily, my concern is actually not about the public safety building's generator. I, we understand that the public safety building's generator unexpectedly went out at the end of 2019. My concern is about the library's generator. And at some point in the past, there was some discussion about potentially moving the library's generator to the public safety building because we knew the public safety building had a need for a generator. And the library generator has been such a disaster. I was not in favor of that at the time that we did the library generator project because I knew it was going to be an imposition on the neighborhood, the primary imposition being the extraordinary amount of noise it creates every single week when you run it, which we're required to in order to make sure it's operating. And the project hasn't been completely finished. The, it was installed incorrectly and had to be installed again. The lasting impact of the noise, I understand, is scheduled to be fixed with some noise abatement systems, but those have been delayed due to supply chain issues, I guess. I am less inclined to go along with this again because of the problems associated with that existing facility and our inability to fix it in the last two, three years, is it now? So I would invite Mr. Ludeman or anybody else to respond to that.
Okay, thanks. And yes, I'm aware of the issues with the noise generated by the generator at the library and essentially mobile nature of the generator we have in front of the, by the police station. So, but I'll let Mr. Ludeman jump right in and talk about both those.
As far as the library generator goes, there was issues on the install. Some of that stemmed from some PSE miscommunication on the power requirements, some of that electrician, some of that on the city. So those things did happen. We are working on some noise mitigation. We have been waiting on parts for about a year, working with the manufacturer and a separate vendor, kind of putting all the minds together to get the best, the best kit we could. To actually upgrade it with the factory system would cost more than the generator cost brand-new, which was shocking. Someone did come up with the idea to move that generator somewhere else. And the problem with that is different facilities have different voltages, different phase of power. For example, in the police station, we couldn't put the library one at the police station because the library unit is on the fuel tank. It's part of the unit. The police station has a separate fuel tank already on site. So that's a huge hindrance we'd have there. And as far as the police department, like right now, we have the mobile one on site. That will be taken away. We'll be able to put the new one right where the old one is. It's just a lot larger as well. Things have changed quite a bit in the emissions packages on generators in the last few years, which changes the housing size as well.
Follow-up question. Why do we anticipate so much of a, of a cost for installation of the public safety building generator when there's already one on site that we're replacing?
Yeah, so I think the cost estimate I put in there for the installation, which will go out to bid, I think I put in there $75,000. That is about $20,000 high, which I was informed today because that included the manual transfer switch, which is being included in the generator that we're voting on tonight. So that will lower that estimate about $55,000. And there's multiple reasons why it's even that high. Part of it is the police station has standards they have to follow with having a jail on site. They need two automatic transfer switches instead of just one. So that's doubled electrical work on that end of things. We're also installing a manual transfer switch, which is in addition to what's not there now, so that we can have redundancy in the back, in the later, in the future, we can put a backup like we've had to currently without having to call electrician. And we just simply plug it in, flip a switch. And that will help yearly our load testing as well. The load tester can just plug in instead of getting electrician on site, take the whole thing apart, change the lugs, change the wires. There's that addition. And the estimate includes them removing our generator, which will require a crane and installing the new generator, trying to crane. And due to the size difference of the new generator, they'll have to do concrete work, cut the concrete wall that's there. So it's quite a bit of work to be done. And as we know, with contracting right now, everything costs more these days. And this is a year out.
And it's still going to be cheaper than the, what we spent on installation at the library. Okay, so then maybe my final question is back at the library. How effective do we think the new noise abatement equipment is going to be?
I think it's going to reduce the noise considerably. I mean, I don't have a decimal number for you, but, because we're not using a factory kit, we're kind of doing a hybrid of our own system. So I think it's going to be fairly close to what a new unit would be with the sound package on it. The library unit does not have a sound package at all. It's just a tin covering. So I think it's going to be substantial.
And the public safety building one will get the sound package?
And I will see sound attenuation. I've triple-checked it.
Okay.
Right across from the hospital.
Yes.
Any other, any other questions?
Well, one, since this is the first I've actually been able to talk to the right person about this. How come we're not done with the project at the library? Like landscaping, maybe filling in some trenches, those kinds of things?
I'm not aware of those issues at the library.
Okay, yeah. Adjacent to the, to the generator itself, the site that we tore up to run all the wiring and everything, still looks unfinished. I think there's a piece of sidewalk missing, not sidewalk adjacent to the street, but sidewalk adjacent to the building.
I'll look into that. I wasn't aware of those things. I know the Parks Department maintains the grounds there. We can work with them to get that accomplished.
Okay.
I heard you. Sound attenuation will be priority, but then we'll take a look at the landscaping around it as well. I was well aware of the sound, sound issue.
We are still waiting on some parts for the sound. A whole bunch will come in actually tomorrow if they're bringing them. But we still are waiting for some mufflers. It's been a chore to get parts this last year.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of item 6H.
Second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve the contract award purchase of a new public safety building generator. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thanks, appreciate the good questions. All right, we're going to move on to item 7, Other Business. First up is ordinance 4017, Authorization to Issue Bonds to Refund the 2012 Utility System Revenue Bonds. Mr. Hoagland, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. So as the mayor mentioned, ordinance 4017 is to authorize a bond issue that would refund the 2012 revenue bonds we have. Those bonds were the final tranche of funding to build the new water treatment plant. They're now eligible for refunding. We do have on with us tonight, Justin Monway. He is our underwriter in this program. We also have Alice Ostiak, who is our bond counsel. So Justin has put together a few slides to provide some information, and then will be available for questions afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Should I go ahead and share the screen, or are you going to be able to do that?
If you can do that, that might be easier for you to manage that on your end.
Okay. Try that here. You see that?
Not yet. Usually takes a second or two. All right, yeah, it's still not sharing. Steve, maybe?
So, yeah, I'll try on, on our end.
All right, looks like Steve's got control, Justin, and you can try to walk us through it.
Okay.
Does that work?
All right.
Yeah.
We got it.
Looks good. All right. Well, as Steve mentioned, my name is Justin Monway with Piper Sandler, and will be acting as the placement agent for the refunding bonds. So, Steve, can you go to the next slide? Okay. So, well, let's just, I'll just start off with that. I wish I had better news from a market perspective. Rates have increased by about 100 basis points since the beginning of the year. That's about a full percentage point there. So municipal tax exempt bonds are not experiencing the inversion the treasury, the treasury market is seeing, where short-term rates are higher than long-term rates. But municipals are pretty reactive to the treasury market, and currently we're seeing a pretty flat yield curve. The Fed, a couple of weeks ago, they mentioned anticipating hikes, perhaps seven times in 2022, and that's up from an anticipated three times what they were thinking in December. So even though the markets have anticipated those hikes, the uncertainty around inflation and COVID and Ukraine, that continues to drive the volatility that we're seeing in the markets. So I would say it's really hard to predict where the rates, where the rate increases will level off, whether it will at some point. But having said that, I don't want to make it sound all doom and gloom. If you look at this graph here, this, this shows what the 20-year interest rate was for the 2012 bonds when those priced, and that was at 2.49%. And that's a AAA rate. That's a benchmark interest rate for AAA general obligation bonds. And then the 10-year rate is at 1.98%. And the reason I showed 20-year back in 2012 was because that was a 20-year bond that was priced at that time. And now with 10 years of maturities left, we're looking at a 10-year bond. So that's just showing what the rate differential is between the two. Any questions before we move on to the next slide? So as you can see here, the plan is to refund the city's 2012 utility system revenue bonds. That's about $7,775,000 of callable maturities. And the call date is June 1, 2022. And this, the savings numbers, this was from, this was from over a week ago. There was a lot of volatility in the last week, so rates have gone up even more. What we were initially talking about was a public sale bond, but because the private placement sector hasn't been affected as much by the interest rate increases, we decided private placement is probably the better way to go. And that's a private bank placement. And a couple of weeks ago, we were seeing savings at 477,000 net present value savings, just over 6%. Right now, with the, with more rate increases over the last week and a half, we're seeing that at about 4.75% now, and that's about 370,000. So the savings are moving away from us. So, so hopefully, we can move pretty quickly on this. And when we do receive the bids, hopefully, they still achieve the city's savings threshold, and we can move forward. Steve, you can move on to the next slide. So based on the calendar, today is the first reading. I understand that there's a possibility that the ordinance could be approved today, but this is based on the current schedule. And the term sheet, which would be distributed to banks, would go out the day after, so April 5. But in actuality, we can actually send that term sheet out later this week. And if for some reason, the council waits to approve the ordinance in April, on April 4, and it doesn't pass, then we can always just pull the, the term sheet from, from the distribution. Then we'll ask for responses back in two to three weeks. And then if the rates are satisfactory, the best proposed rate is satisfactory and achieves savings that the city would like to obtain, then we will move forward and close the bonds a couple of weeks after that. And that is, yep, yep.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we were talking about this earlier today. I spoke with city attorney about this. So we initially built in two reads for the ordinance per council procedures. Because of the, the way the bond market is moving, I was going to ask council to perhaps consider waiving the two-read rule and adopt this ordinance tonight so that we could move quicker into the sale aspect of these bonds to try and capitalize on a better interest
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I don't really think any purpose is served in waiting another week on this. So I would be supportive of waiving, suspending our rule for two reads, which requires a two-thirds vote, so that we can proceed to a vote on the ordinance tonight. We could even do that right now. I mean, I move to suspend the rules so that we could vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Walter, or first, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. McDougal to suspend the two readings for ordinance for this particular item. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Rule is suspended.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that leads us to the next, the item at hand. Any other questions for Mr. Hoagland? Okay, any question? Okay, Mr. Walters.
What is our, our savings threshold that was mentioned earlier?
Right, the, the ordinance has 2% written into the, the body of the ordinance that there needs to be a 2% savings, which actually exceeds our debt policy. Our policy only requires that there be a savings when we were putting the ordinance together, though together, though we did put together a 2% savings. So that's what we're looking at now.
And if we don't achieve that, then we think that the idea is that we could do this again later and save more?
At some point, I would imagine, when we started putting this together, you know, we started putting our financing team together and having these communications about doing this refunding, there wasn't the volatility in the bond market that we're seeing now. Had I saw that or anticipated that, I probably would not have included that 2% threshold and just matched our debt policy of achieving a savings.
Because 1% is still savings, right? Should we revise it?
If council doesn't object to that, that would be, that'd be good with me, to revise it to, whatever council's pleasure is, if you want to revise it to a specific metric like 1% or just remove that language altogether. There's no other statutory requirement to have a minimum savings.
I'm going to amend that for just, I'm going to just jump in there for a second. We do want to have a parameter, sorry, this is Alice Ostiak.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
We do want to have a parameter in there for savings, but it can be simply to show that there is a savings. It doesn't need to be more than that. But we do need to demonstrate that there are savings.
No, I agree, I think everybody on council agrees with that. But I don't know, I can't remember how it was written in our contract with them and if we have to modify that contract.
No, the only place we would need to modify would be the Exhibit B to the ordinance would need to be amended by the council. And it's in Exhibit B, it's Item, Item J, the refunding conditions, under 2A, under other terms and conditions.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
At the bottom of page 16, the second to last sentence references the percentage of savings set forth in Exhibit A. Is that, should that actually be Exhibit B?
That should be Exhibit B, yes.
Okay, so maybe we make that correction.
Uh huh.
And then J, other terms, you were saying J 2A? There it is, shall be at least 2%.
Correct. Yep.
So, Mr. Hoagland, did you recommend just any amount of savings? Is it worth doing at 0.01% savings?
I think, I think any savings is better than what we're, what we're doing now.
Because it will fluctuate, the rate fluctuates if we don't refund, right?
Yeah, and the way the rates have been going now, you know, in that increasing trend, it's hard to say when those might come back down.
And I'll just add that just because you set the parameter, say at 0% savings, at least, at least 0%, it doesn't mean that, say, we come back at, call it 1% savings, for instance, that doesn't necessarily mean that you need to move forward with that, with that refunding. It just gives you the flexibility to make that, make that call, to have that option. If we set it at 2% and it comes in at 1%, then you can't, you can't accept the bid. So having it at 0% will allow that flexibility to make, to make the choice, at least.
Yes, I would agree with that. And I would add that this ordinance, you know, delegates this authority to Steve to go ahead and make that call, once we see what the bids are. And if the bids are not acceptable, or we think that there's a chance the market could improve, you know, he could reject the bids on behalf of the city and try again, ask for new bids in a few weeks or a few months. The ordinance authorization extends through the end of the year, so we could do it anytime before, before December 31, 2022.
So, so what I wanted to get clarity on was the consequence of, of doing nothing?
Uh huh.
If, if we didn't refund, if we didn't pass this ordinance?
There's no change to the, to the underlying bonds. You would just continue to pay them on the schedule that they are on. They're not variable rate bonds, they are fixed. So there's no change. They are fixed. The, however, in the bond market and with these bonds, typically, you price the bonds out with a 10-year call, assuming that at that 10-year mark, you will refund them for savings. And so there's sort of a concept of, you know, the longer you go past that 10-year mark, keeping the bonds outstanding at the old rates, you're losing the opportunity to realize savings. Now that, again, can change based on what the market does and what interest rates you can get at the time. So there are a number of variables. And I don't know if, Justin, you want to explain it any more clearly than I've just done, but.
No, that was, that was pretty good. Yeah, it's just, you're, say you're paying a 4% on your old bonds, and if you don't refund it at the call date, you'll just continue to pay that 4%. And you're just basically losing the opportunity to save at a lower rate if that was attainable every day after that call date.
Okay, I had thought that it was a different rate in the second half of the 20-year term. But if not, still, a positive savings, we could reduce the 2% to 0%. We could fix the exhibit number on page 16. And then your projection is that we will be saving a couple percentage points if all things being equal and no big changes?
Well, if, yeah, if there are no more interest rate movements between now and when the bids are due, then yes, you'll definitely achieve decent savings. But we're just keeping our fingers crossed with, with how rates will, will continue to move over the next several weeks.
So I would move, at least just to put a motion on the table, I would move approval of the ordinance with two changes. One, in Exhibit B, Section J 2A, from 2% to 0%. And then at the bottom of page 16 to reference Exhibit B.
Okay, can you run that one? Did you capture that one, Marcia?
Yes, we will. The motion is to approve ordinance 4017 with two changes. The bottom of page 16, change the reference from Exhibit A to Exhibit B. And in Item J 2A, change the percentage from 2% to 0%.
Okay, so since I wasn't fast enough to write that down, but this is recorded, I'm going to go ahead and accept the motion by Mr. Walters and the second by Mr. Carter to approve the ordinance with those two changes. And the ordinance is, I will read the ordinance number just to make sure, 4017. And Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Clela McGrath? Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. And we're still hoping for 2% at least, but now we have the flexibility to, to get it there. So thank you very much for the insight. All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, you guys.
Okay, moving on to item 7B, city council ward redistricting. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. Bear with me just a moment until I get to my slide deck. Every 10 years, federal government does a census, and Washington state law requires that entities with elected boards or councils reevaluate their districts at that time. So the RCW is 29876010. I put the paragraph that drives that responsibility right here, and I just, I underlined the parts that are pertinent to the city, municipal corporation, governing body comprised of council periodically redistrict after the most recent federal census. So the most recent census, the data publication from the most recent census was impacted by COVID. So the RCW was updated, that provided a little relief on the timing. So for entities such as ours that don't have elections in 2022, the deadline to have the redistricting complete is November 15, 2022. And I just put the, I just screenshotted the whole RCW in here for, just for ease of availability. This next slide, I put some of the, most of the primary bullets that the RCW requires, one being ensuring that each ward be as nearly equal as possible. So we, we did hire a consultant to do this for us. He said that there's really no definition for that, but they consider as equal as possible to be within 10% of each other, as compact as possible, geographically contiguous, and then population data not used for favoring or disfavoring any racial group or political party. So there's a number of items there that you can, you can follow through, but we can get into the data real quickly and see where the city vantage court has ended up. I put a schedule in here as well. So our plan, you'll see that our plan, that the data doesn't drive any real requirements to do anything other than what we currently have, but we still need to go through publication process, public hearing process. So this is kind of a schedule of what we're thinking of doing. Here we are, March 28. What we're looking at is down here, April 11, is being the public hearing date, and then completion of this project on April 25. This is just a snapshot of our three wards as they currently sit. This is a snapshot of the consultant that we contracted with, Samamish Data. We had never gone through this before, at least I hadn't, any of the staff that I talked to hadn't either. So we looked around, got references, and came up with Samamish Data. They were established in 1979. They've done over 1,000 redistricting plans. Initial consultation, we estimated a contract not to exceed 2,000. The actual cost turned out to be $300. This is what the, the data showed. So the census showed the city has population of 17,637. City has three wards, so you divide that, 17,637 by three, it gives you an ideal population for each ward of 5,879. Again, remember, 10% is kind of the metric that they consider to be generally equal of each other. When looking at the, the results down, this matrix down here, you see the ideal population of 5879. In Ward 1, the population was actually 11 below that. Ward 2 was 9 above, and Ward 3 was 2 above. So in terms of percent deviation, Ward 1 was 0.19% off the ideal, Ward 2 0.15%, and Ward 3 0.03% off the ideal population. So very, very close to what the ideal was we obtained within our existing ward districts. This is a look at race information by ward. You can see the total white, black, American Indian, Asian, Native Hawaiian, and other. And then within each of those, there's some population with Hispanic origins as well. But looking across these populations, you can see by race, they're very, very close as well. So the consultant we met with, sorry, I guess I went through that kind of quickly. Let me back up just a little bit, see if anybody has any questions on any of this data, the population by, by ward, or any of the race information?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I, I agree that the actual population numbers are very close together. Maybe we could take a couple houses out of Christine's ward and add them to mine, but also, those people may have already moved since the census was taken. I mean, it's just so close. And obviously, Ward 1 is a little more diverse than the other, the other wards, but also with that, with those few numbers, it doesn't amount to a whole lot of difference statistically. So I concur that there's, there's not a lot of, there's not hardly anything to be gained by jockeying around with the, the boundaries. I, I don't think I'd feel comfortable if there was a 10% difference. That, that does strike me as quite a bit, but there, there's nothing like that. It's almost zero.
So, next steps, I did go through this material with, with the mayor, I believe reviewed with CFC as well. So our consultant, after, you know, going through this material with us, recommended that the city make no changes. That makes, that makes sense to me, talking with the mayor and CFC. They agreed with, with that as well. So I did work pretty closely with the city attorney on this and asked her about not doing anything additionally here, since we don't really have a plan, but the way the RCW is worded, we do need to go through the process, the public, public notice, public hearing, take comment, make sure the, the citizens are up to speed on, on what we're doing here. So, so those will be next steps. The material that we went through here will publish on the city's website. There's already a notice to the paper to publish the public hearing for the next two weeks, and then we'll be back here on the 11th to conduct the public hearing, and then we'll be taking comments until, I believe, the, the Friday after that, around the 15th. So happy to answer any questions or address any comments.
Thank you. Yeah, even with almost as, Mr. Walters pointed out, nearly zero changes, we still have to go through the process, which is good, because it lets everyone know that there was, here's, here's the data. Council, any questions for Mr. Hoagland?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall?
Yeah, just a quick question. I mean, I'm rather amazed at how close the, the three came. And I was curious if anyone was around 10 years ago, when the last redistricting would have come up, how close they were at that time? Like, did we actually get closer or, you know, about the same?
Right. So I, I was here at that time, but that, that work didn't go through the clerk's office at that time. So that took place in the planning department under the previous planning director. I did talk with Ms. Meesmer briefly about that, but neither of us have insight into that information.
Mayor Miller. I was thinking even Mr. Walters might have been around then, but not quite on council.
I wasn't on council, but I remember the discussion, and there was some variance. Ward 3 was off. I think it was too small. No, I think it was too large, had too few people, too many. I don't know. But there was some variance with Ward 3. It wasn't 10%, but it wasn't as close as this. So it has gotten closer together.
All right. Oh, this actually is open for public comment if any members of the audience wish to comment on this or any participants online. Again, we'll continue to put out this, this information as we move forward according with, accordance with the RCW and the plan that Mr. Hoagland laid out. Okay, no other questions? We'll move on to item 7D, ordinance 4019, creating a new chapter, 2.48 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. This is for discussion, and I believe Mr. Meesmer and perhaps Mr. Walters are working this one together.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. And so, as the council knows, and I think the public as well, each year... And so as the council knows, and I think the public as well, each year, get rid of that. Each year, the council creates the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee who review applications for use of lodging tax funds. And those funds are then distributed to various organizations to help establish tourism and various events in town, bringing all the people in that, that help us survive through the various months of the year for those events. At our previous meeting, I believe it was the 18th, the city council had discussion in regards to codifying the procedures for establishing the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Walters has graciously put that ordinance together, and I would ask that Mr. Walters take it from there.
Mr. Walters.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath, Mr. Young and I, Mr. Meesmer, have collaborated on the draft ordinance that's in the packet. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee structure has never been adopted by ordinance. It doesn't exist in the municipal code. We maintain Title II for administration personnel in the municipal code where various other committees are represented. So one of our goals here was to codify the role of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, codify its responsibilities, also to clarify the state statutory language because that is not as clear as it could be. 10 years ago, we were administering the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee incorrectly. Eight years ago, we were administering it incorrectly because we had too many elected officials on the committee. One is allowed by statute, and we had three, like other council committees. We corrected that. But some clarifications would still benefit the city. We can also expand the participation in determining how our lodging tax revenue is spent. So some of the statutory background are, first of all, we're required to have such a committee to recommend how to spend lodging tax. At least two members of entities that collect the tax, representatives of hotels, motels, need to be on the committee. And at least two members of people engaged in activities that are eligible to be funded by the tax, largely people promoting tourism, need to be on the committee. It's a little unclear from the state statute what that means. We've tried to clarify. We've previously had three members of each of those groups, but the statute requires two and that they be in equal numbers. Mr. Meesmer has related that it's been difficult to always get participation to fill all of those roles, but four of the six members, other than the council member, has been quite static over the years. So the proposal in the packet would adopt by ordinance and put into the city code a structure that reduces the membership of the number of people collecting the tax, the hoteliers, from three to two, and the number of people eligible to receive the tax, event organizers, other people promoting tourism's from three to two, and then add two additional LTAC members that don't fit either of those categories. And there's got to be an exclusion from those other two categories because those two categories per the statute have to be equal. But that benefit from tourism promotion. So for example, and there's a preference built in to the text here, a local business that benefits from tourism promotion. If they're not a hotel and they're not an event promoter, they didn't otherwise, they didn't previously qualify to be on the committee. So this would enable local businesses that benefit from tourism promotion to also have a role on the committee. It addresses the likelihood of a conflict of interest on the committee and the requirement to recuse yourself from debate on that allocation. It clarifies what constitutes a quorum, a majority of members of the committee, and adds additional reporting and evaluation requirements for LTAC recommendations to council and cites to the statute. Groups that receive money need to report on how many tourism, how many tourists they are bringing in as a result of their activity. They also need to project that in their applications. And then finally, it provides for a path for the city council to revise allocations from original LTAC recommendations, which is consistent with a 2016 Attorney General opinion, which was necessary because the statute wasn't very clear on how that is to be done. So along with advertising for public comment on this ordinance, and this would be the first read of it, on a, on a two-read rule of this ordinance, the department has also advertised more broadly, more enthusiastically for LTAC membership. And our recommendation is that we take up LTAC membership appointments after we've dealt with what the structure is going to be.
All right. Thank you, and thanks for taking this one on because I know going back in history, you wrote, that you wrote the strategic plan to convert, and I was the beneficiary of that, having chaired the LTAC after we actually had a plan in place, and now we're looking to codify it. So I think we're moving in the right direction. This is open for public comment, so maybe we'll take a public comment now, and then council can discuss. So any members of the audience that wish to come on, come on up and provide some input on our LTAC plan?
Good evening, council. Thanks for listening to me. I'm Pamela Allen. I live at 14533 Dura Place in Anacortes. Just a little background, my husband and I built two hotels and owned and operated them for many years in Anacortes. So I was part of the understanding that Anacortes was not following the regulations for the, how the LTAC committee was comprised. I had many conversations with state auditors. I also had many conversations with city council members on, at the time when we started, there were absolutely no hotel owners that were on the LTAC committee. I was told at the time that it was a conflict of interest for a hotel owner to sit on the committee, even though the WAC clearly stated that two hotel owners or two lodging tax that had to collect the tax, which would include B&amp;B, Airbnb, short-term rentals, all of those people have to collect a lodging tax. So any of those people, there should be two members on the committee. The WAC also states that the other two members are persons involved in activities authorized to be funded by the revenue received. So I feel like we finally got to a point where we were almost correct on the Lodging Tax Committee, and we've, we've worked hard on it. I did see the changes in the wording, and I got to say that when I got to duties and authority and I saw E, "An LTAC member must avoid a conflict of interest and may not cast a vote nor participate in a debate about an allocation to an entity that LTAC member represents or has any pecuniary interest in." I absolutely do not agree with this. It was what I was told 15, 20 years ago on why a hotel member could not be on the committee. Anybody that is a hotel member or somebody who collects taxes is going to have a conflict of interest of some sort with this because they benefit from how this lodging tax is given out to different or various organizations. The purpose of it is heads-in-bedds tourism promotion for people that are coming from outside of the city of Anacortes. And I think that I've read, I, I did a lot of research online. There were a lot of communities that have LTAC ordinances. None of them have this wording. I have not seen any restrictions or limitations or conflict of interests shown that any person on the LTAC that has any business or any collection of tax, that that creates a conflict of interest. So I don't understand the benefit of that wording. I don't think it needs to be in there. And so I'd really like to understand why it's there. The other thing is that we also changed, it looks like there is a change in how it's comprised, the LTAC, which, Mr. Walters, you did explain that. But I'm concerned where the state WAC actually says that two members who are persons involved in activities authorized. We've changed the wording to two representatives of nonprofit organizations. So you're limiting the scope of that, and I'm not really sure why you're choosing to limit that. It doesn't increase your ability to get persons that are helped by the funding of that. So I don't, I don't, I'm trying to understand why you put that wording in there. It was my understanding very clearly, after talking to state auditors, that their intent of this law was that 50% of the LTAC committee would be voters who collected the funds, and 50% would be businesses or entities that benefited from these funds being spent. So I feel like we're creating a committee of six, and we're trying to limit it at points that I don't understand. So I'm just asking for clarification in why you're using wording that was actually tossed at me 20 years ago for why a hotel owner could not be on the committee? So that's, I'm just, maybe this needs to go up for a little more public comment. Did you by any chance send out the wording changes on this to the hotel and lodging owners to let them know that you were going to be doing or changing any of the wording on the LTAC? Just maybe it needs a little more time if you're going to limit the scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to provide input? Oh, okay, I've got a hand raised, and Sarah Hollahan. See if, there we go. Okay, you should be able to speak.
Okay, thanks. Yes, my name's Sarah Hollahan, 151138th Street, Anacortes. I wanted to commend the team that's working on this. I think these are really good changes, and I really like that it's going to be, you know, in the code, very clear. Personally, I do like that you're opening it up to more members so we can get some new ideas and new energy. I was thinking that it was going to be actually open more to maybe other citizens that maybe are not business owners specifically. So I'm just curious about that because in the introduction, you talk about how the events that the, the lodging tax pays for benefit also our community and our residents. So I think all of us have an interest in how that money is spent to make wonderful events happen in our town. So that, that would be the only little change, I would say. Maybe one could be a business owner and one could be a citizen at large. But I think it's really important. And I think that it's a very interesting committee where there's basically a built-in kind of conflict of interest because the entities that can receive the money are possibly also the ones applying for the money. So I think that addressing that conflict of interest is, is actually needed, so. And thank you for your work. I look forward to getting this, having you get this passed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak on this one? Okay, over to council discussion. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Just to clarify and respond to a couple of comments, the third grouping, the new grouping for membership on the committee, reads as two residents of Anacortes with a, a preference for one representative of a business with a physical presence in Anacortes that benefits from tourism. So it wouldn't have to be a business. It could be two residents that aren't businesses, but there provides, there is a, provided for a preference for one. I definitely stand by the, the need for a conflict of interest provision. We're handing out hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in tax revenue. It's revenue collected from hoteliers. It's to benefit tourism generally. It's to benefit the economic activity that tourism provides. It's to benefit hotels. But the conflict of interest provision as written is still protecting that public money from a, a board member, a member of the LTAC committee who would be the recipient of the money. I don't foresee that language, and if others see this as a problem, we could look at language changes, obviously. But I don't foresee that language being used against membership in the hotel group. I don't, I don't understand how it could be applied to members that are in the hotel group because the hotel groups aren't the ones receiving the funds. They're the ones collecting it and passing it to the tourism groups. And then I think that third point was, you know, do the, do the hotel groups and the tourism promotion groups have to be equal? If, if the legislature intended that, they could have written it that way, but they didn't. They wrote at least two members from the hotel group, at least two members from the other group, and they have to be equal.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to be very careful not to enter the debate, but I'm going to provide some history. And having chaired the LTAC for a few years, the leaning on the hoteliers was an important part of that history because they know how to get heads in beds and they know what things bring. They're the ones interacting with those customers, those folks that are outside of 50 miles. So just, just put that, put that out there as yes, it's probably a, you could probably argue there's a conflict because they're trying to get events that bring people. They're trying to persuade the committee, I guess, to bring in events and fund events that bring heads to beds. It's ultimately what I'm trying to, what, what my experience has been with LTAC. But, okay, that's, that's enough from me. Council?
Yeah, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, so I want to thank the, the two comments we had from the public. I think that they, both folks brought up concerns that we had when we were discussing kind of, not at, we weren't, we're not a committee, so it was not at a committee level. But when, when council member Young and council member Walters and Mr. Meesmer and I were together, those were some of the concerns we brought up. So one was the conflict of interest, the importance of making sure we have hoteliers. And, you know, the nonprofit term was difficult because part of it was just having events, right? Things that, that would generate revenue and heads in beds from guests beyond that 50-mile radius so that they're staying in the hotels. And to deal with some of that conflict of interest, we came to the conclusion that having that third component of representation from business or community members that had some kind of expertise related to tourism, whether it be a, a business that, you know, does tour-type group things or a restaurateur who has great meals, that was kind of us hedging our bets when other members of the committee would need to recuse themselves. I, I think that Ms. Allen, Ms. Allen kind of hit the head on, like, hit the nail on the head with the whole concept of the LTAC committee and collecting a tax means you want to have folks involved who have the expertise to use those funds effectively because it is a tax and we, and we, it is, it's, the intent of it is to bring outside dollars into our community. So, you know, I, I think that we did our best effort, and we're, at least I'm more than happy to continue to hear from the public. And I apologize for my small child here.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I just wanted to thank everyone that put this together. It's neat, well-put-together, easy to read. With the conflict of interest, the way I see it is if a particular amount of money is going to an organization that someone on the board is on, that they're more likely just abstaining from the vote, kind of like we do on the council. So to me, that makes sense. The only place I have a question on, though, is the RCW states that there shall be a member of an elected official that serves as the chair of the committee, whereas on here, we have a city council, and it's always been city council. I was just wondering on the word change, on why?
Mr. Walters.
Mayor Miller.
Yes, just each of those sections go beyond the statute to express what it is we want to see consistent with the statute. Yeah, it's, it's a more narrow application.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougal.
Regarding clause E and Ms. Allen's concerns,
Regarding clause E. and Ms. Allen's concerns, the, the term allocation is in there, so presumably that means, basically, the, the hoteliers that are on the LTAC committee, they're not, they're, they don't have any conflict of interest in concerning the allocation of funds unless it happens to be that that person, individual, also is a, a member of some organization that is actually potentially receiving the funds. So, essentially, the hotelier would never have to recuse themselves from, basically, all the, all the normal ones that come up, unless they have some other separate financial interest in the, the recipient, I guess. Is that good clarity?
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to just go beyond and say, you know, any interpretation from 10 years ago that hoteliers couldn't serve on the LTAC committee because they had a conflict of interest was just wrong. It wasn't rooted in the statute, we didn't have any code on it ourselves, that was just incorrect. And this conflict of interest provision, I don't see as being read against a hotelier ever, because they don't receive the allocation, as Mr. McDougal points out, and otherwise, it would only apply to an LTAC member who is representing the entity receiving that allocation. So, they wouldn't vote on that one, and then they'd come back into the room and, or, you know, rejoin the table, and they'd vote on the rest of them.
Presumably, if the hotelier, like, was planning a, a arts festival or something onsite, then, then they would have to recuse, but other than that, no recusal.
Yeah, and that's, again, a little bit of history there. There, I remember, you know, some sort of informational kiosk that LTAC was voting on that would end up in a, one of the hotels. So, you know, there, or maybe some event, some concert, some music project, or some arts would be it at a hotel. So, I don't, I don't know if that helps, I'm just providing that, that info, that indeed that those are the kind of allocations that have happened in the past.
So, Mr. McDougal, I think you, I think this goes back to the challenge of living in a small town where you have a, a group of folks who are very involved, who will end up having a conflict of interest, because I do think that that's something that comes up quite frequently, whether or not you're a hotelier who serves, is also a member of some kind of a nonprofit that puts on events. I mean, that, that, that's the crux of the challenge, and I think the, the, the intent of trying to, like, find balance with addressing the conflict of interest, but also then making sure there's enough folks on the committee that can still have perspective, was the reason we added those two additional members who don't fall into the, those, the categories of hotelier or, or entities receiving, eligible to receive funds, right? Because, yeah, it's hard, and I can, if you know the people, the history of the LTAC committee, even, not, I'm not going back 10 years, but even the last five years, like, these people are involved, right? These are, these are folks who care about our community, they, they serve in one position, but they also qualify for the other one, and, and how do we make sure that they can still participate? Because I think their intent is to be involved, and we want their level of expertise and understanding of how, you know, our community works. So, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm open to, if there's some refinement that can occur when it comes to the, the conflict of interest and that component, I'm, I'm more than open to hearing
So, so I think what I'm hearing, if there's some opportunities to work the language, you know, I don't think council's ready to adopt this tonight, or we're not, that wasn't the plan anyway. So, if there's some maybe minor adjustments, provide some inputs. I think Mr. Miesmer could be a central point of contact, and if you've got any changes, then we'll plan on bringing it back, I think next week was the plan. All right, nothing else heard? Okay, we'll bring, bring this back next week for hopefully final adoption. Okay, moving on to item 7E, ordinance 4015, critical area regulation amendments. Mr. Miesmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience, it'll take me just a second to get a couple of slides up, hopefully.
And this is a discussion item with possible action, and it's open for public comment.
Okay, once again, so we're looking at is ordinance 4015, which would adopt the following proposed critical areas amendments to chapter 1970, and there are only just a total of four actual changes. So, this one is amending table 1970 235B to increase the required buffer widths consistent with Department of Ecology guidelines for category three wetland, and it's on page 37 of your packet. And what I've, what I've done is I've consolidated the actual changes in these slides, and yet in your packet, and, and for the public, there are strike-through and underlines that correspond with what you see in these slides. So, here, what we have is category three wetland. When we were working with the Department of Ecology, there was a couple of errors that occurred. One was category three with a high function of wildlife habitat and habitat function score of eight and nine, having a buffer of 300, 225, and 150, and so we're, we're fixing that consistent with the requirements of the Department of Ecology.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So, before you move on to the next one, on this one, so the result is just no difference between category two and category three?
That's correct.
And that's what Ecology's guidance or recommendations is?
That's correct. And then, we're looking at here AMC 1970 330C, which eliminates the allowance for stream buffer reductions, and then, of course, renumbering pages as needed. And what this boils down to is that we had originally proposed a maximum 50-foot buffer on the streams, and the best available science just didn't support reducing those buffers additionally beyond that 50-foot. Here, we are proposing to eliminate under 1970 330F, the allowance for stream relocations, and again, in that area, we, we just didn't see how best available science supported relocating streams. And finally, here, under 1970 340, to eliminate the allowance for fish and wildlife habitat conservation buffer with averaging and then renumbering as needed. And again, in these instances, after going back and looking at best available science, it was determined that the, the best approach was just to eliminate these options and staying with that proposed 50-foot buffer at the time. And that, if there are any questions, I could close with noting that the Planning Commission held a public hearing. We did receive one comment in favor of these proposed amendments. You will find the findings of fact in your packet as well. The Planning Commission voted unanimously, for those all present, to recommend approval to the city council. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to try and answer those.
And the Planning Commission meeting was on the 16th of March.
That's correct. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Okay, and, okay, well, this is open for public comment. If I've got any members of the audience that want to weigh in on this one? All right, how about participants online? Okay, over to you, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
With this last one that's on the screen, the buffer width averaging, Mr. Miesmer, would you say it's, it's fairly common to allow for buffer width averaging in other jurisdictions that have other buffer regulatory regimes?
Yes, I would say in other jurisdictions where there are larger buffers, it's common to have buffer averaging, and in fact, in our wetlands, under wetlands, we do have buffer averaging.
Yeah, so it seems to me that with a 50-foot buffer, maybe you don't want to allow buffer averaging, because then you're going to be going below 50 feet, and that might be just not enough. And arguably, 50 feet is not enough, and the way we know that is because the Growth Management Hearings Board has told us that 50 feet is not, at least at the moment, justified by best available science. So, if, if in response to the Growth Board's ruling, we make the buffers bigger, seems to me we might bring this back?
It's entirely possible that as those buffers grow, we may very well bring this section back to council and readjust to allow for buffer averaging.
Because I, I remember a debate at, at Skagit County about Skagit County riparian buffers and how they're overly large compared to Watcom County's riparian buffers, but Watcom County's buffers are more stringent in that you can't do very many activities within the buffer, but Skagit County allows you to do quite a few more activities in the, so it seems to me that there are trade-offs, and if we start revising the width of the buffer, that we, we may want to do buffer width averaging. But in the meantime, with our small buffer that we have now, we'll get rid of this, and we'll not be dropping below 50 feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
This is consistent with our settlement agreement, this is, enjoys the recommendation from the Planning Commission. I, I don't think that this is subject to our two-read rule that we've talked so much about tonight, right? I move that we approve this ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Carter, to approve ordinance 4015, changes as presented. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, and with no further business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks for the work.